Okay, welcome everyone to the September 13th Neshoba Regional School Committee regular meeting. This is our first meeting of the school, new school year. Welcome back everyone. I'm glad to see almost everyone's made it back. I think we're going to be able to move through the agenda relatively quickly. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. All right, so our first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? No. Okay. Is that a hand? Was that an and-hand?
No, no, I was just cleaning my keyboard.
Oh, okay. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Clancy will let you kick it off.
We're there already.
Yeah.
So that sounds great. So I'm just going to review a couple of different things and I know that we'll go into a little bit more depth when Jeff comes up and talks about facilities. But I just want to take half a minute here to commend our facilities in our grounds group for this summer. The work under Jeff's great guidance. You know, his team, Jim and I think Pam just did an awesome job this year. And our grounds, I don't know if you've noticed, like there isn't a weed to be found on our properties between Stowe and Lancaster. There's not a weed there. They spent a lot of time at the high school this year internally as well as externally. All the dead brush has been pulled away. And I know that Jeff's going to speak in some depth on some of the work that we did. But there was literally a project going on every single community this summer. And so I feel really, really good about some of the work that we got done this year. The Lancaster room, we got, I think we finally found a nice conclusion to that. We still have some work to do over at Center School. We'll stop in over there and quickly, I'll finish up a carpet project over there. But Jeff will go into more detail here when he comes up to do his report. Buses, we're going to talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. Not right now, but I think that we'll have both Michelle and Pat come up and speak to our bus situation. As you know, we started a new contract this year. We've still got one or two buses that are still running marginally late. And I know that Michelle's going to speak to that and some of the work that's being done behind the scenes with regards to our buses. Moving forward, we're going to continue with our, with meeting with our ongoing town administration communication meetings. We did that this year and I think it worked really, really well. And so we've decided that we will continue on into the new year with that. But I, we're not going to meet every single week. That's a change for us. And I think in part because we realize that we really just need to meet the once a month because we meet so frequently outside of that meeting. And so we're moving ahead with that with each of the three communities. Last year, we were really faithful about every week. Ryan McNutt, when he was here, was meeting with us. And Bill Wrigley would on occasion meet with us. But anytime we needed to meet with him, we always went there. So there was a lot of communication. We want to make sure that continues to keep going. Extended school year this summer, I want to send out a special note of thanks to Steve Grant and Joan DeAngelis for their work with the extended school year. We took a different approach, starting even at the beginning of last school year. And we did a lot of data collection, really pleased with how that worked and who the kids were that ultimately landed there. We made a couple of different changes. One of those changes was we added a school adjustment counselor for students who require some additional social emotional support throughout the summer. So that program went very, very well. So a special thank you to everyone who helped implement such a strong and successful E S Y. Staffing, a note or two on staffing, just so that you're aware of that. We, with, I said in my notes here that we filled our staffing with relative ease. In some cases, like at the high school, for example, one of our positions, we had over 200 applications. So we had no problems in filling our, those areas that were basically within the classrooms got filled very, very quickly. Administrative positions, we generally received about 50 to 60 applications for those. So those were also well applied for. I will tell you, the one that we are struggling with though is our nurse leader. And with the, a huge loss from my perspective, a perspective of Donna Lindstrom this summer, accepting a new position outside of our district. She was just somebody who kind of set the bar, that level of compassion and caring for kids and the clinical expertise that she had, the social emotional piece that she got so well. She really set a high bar. I think to date, I could be off maybe a couple. I think we've had less than 10 applications for that position. So it is not going to be an easy position for us to fill. We have done several interviews and so far, you know, we just haven't found the exact candidate. So we're doing our very best on that.
Is that an enigma for us or is that pretty consistent across districts?
I would say it's not always an easy position to fill anyway. Nurses generally as a rule are not an easy position to fill. So, you know, I'd be cautious with how we reflect on this. But at the end of the day, anytime you lose a school nurse, that's a huge loss to your district. School nurse leader, that's even bigger, so.
Historically, over the past few years, it's been a tough position to fill.
Tough position to fill.
Before Donna stepped up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, now you say that, I'm glad you said that because you're absolutely right. I think even when Donna, when they put Donna into that position, it was very poorly applied for. So they're tough, they're tough positions. New principals onboarding, both of course Principal D. Domenico at the high school, Principal Grady at Hale, continue to acclimate into their new requirements. Both worked extensively throughout the summer months. They've also met with community leaders and been very active. Kyle Grady thought, designed kind of interesting. He actually went to meet with the Stowe Historical Society and asked if they had any older prints. And he's taken those, Prince's wife is an interior designer by trade, and has had them all beautifully framed and they are all hanging in his office right now. Really, it's beautiful. So anyway, they're doing really, really well, making some really good decisions. We're thrilled to have them and thrilled to have them as part of our team. Seat pack, just a couple of quick comments about seat pack right now. Again, I think they took a great approach to the year. Their year is basically planned right now. There's a calendar of events that are out there. If parents want to reach out to Joan DeAngelis' office or Isabel Wells, I'm sure that they can get the list of events that they are looking to sponsor. There's a focus this year on instructional delivery for special education students. And so I think that you're going to see that interweave a lot of their work. Isabel Wells, I mean, we have to do a shout out to her too. She just does an amazing job. And she's looking for co-chair this year. And I think just someone to help offset the role and the work that she does. But she's simply amazing. Open houses, we're in the midst of open house season. And certainly when one of our houses has a, or one of our schools has an open house, you can't get near the building at all. So either come early or you just can't get in there. Great, great attendance by families in our open houses to date. The last thing that I wanted to just put on the table was hurricane victim support. And, you know, that's something that I think everybody wants to do something and you don't always know the right thing to do or how we can go about this or whatnot. I know when Katrina hit, I know this is a long time ago, but I remember reaching out to a superintendent down, down south at that time. And my district had paired up with their district and we took a look at what they, now they weren't in the hardest hit area, they were just kind of in the outer bands. But nonetheless, they got hit hard. And we were able to kind of do a mass gathering of supplies that they needed and whatnot. And we had a nice little checklist of what they needed and we were able to go through. And then we literally sent trucks down, had trucks pick it up and then take it down, down to them. And that was, that was something that worked really, really well for us. So I've reached out right now to Tom Scott. He's in touch with his counterpart down in Texas, his counterparts in Texas and Florida. So just kind of waiting to see, I think there's a number of our districts across Commonwealth right now that are just kind of waiting to see if there's something there that we can do to help out. So stay tuned on that one. I just, I know that we've got something going on in Luther Burbank right now. But I'd asked all of our principals just to hold tight because what we don't want to have is that all the schools are doing different things. And I would prefer to do it as one school family. And so we're just kind of waiting for that opportunity. When it comes, we'll let you know. So that's it for a quick update.
I think we have a student to report. We'd love to hear from you.
Yes, yes.
Welcome back.
I know, back to school.
Yay.
So everyone is excited to be back for another school year. Students have an early release day this Friday for teacher development. So people are kind of excited about that as well. And Superintendent Clancy talked about open houses. One of the high schools happening on October 5th from 6 to 8. But the middle schools are also hosting them throughout the next, throughout the fall months. Then go to athletics, the fall season's off to a good start. There are approximately 350 student athletes playing eight different sports this fall at various levels from freshman to varsity. This week, Neshoba teams are wearing orange pre-rack tapes, ribbons, to work with the MIAA on concussion awareness. So everyone is taking pictures in their orange. The golf team has a 2-0 and 1 record. Cross-country teams had their first meet yesterday, but fell to Wachusett, which is a pretty strong team. The field hockey team is now 2-0 and 1. We played Fishford this afternoon and we beat them 8-0. I can say that confidently, so that was exciting. The boy soccer team has a new head coach and the team's improving. They're currently 0-1 and 1, but the team is improving and has shown they're pretty strong. Girl soccer team also off to a 3-0 start with wins over Algonquin, Holy Name and Grand Dunstable. The volleyball team is 3-2 and looking to make another run of league title this year. So that's very exciting. And lastly, the football team won their home opener. And we have a game this Saturday at Westboro. From the music department, the music department is off and running. And Mary Rollinson, there are 55 out of 68 students who are new instrumentalists in the fourth grade and 50 continuing in the fifth grade band. So there's a huge turnout from Lancaster. But the other schools are also excited and still bringing numbers as well. And the show, the symphonic band has become their second year of community music making with 102 musicians raging from sixth grade to 85 years old. So huge community outreach there. And middle school students, high school students, college students. My mom takes part in it, so everyone's a part of it. In high school, the pet band had its first game on Friday, or played its first game on Friday. And by the end, the student section was singing along with the band, which is the first time that's happened since I've been in high school. So that's very exciting. And more excitingly, there's going to be a Neshoba Trium Music Honor Society chapter, which is a music honor society basically. So it stands for Modern Music Masters and is a program of the National Association for Music Education, which emphasizes musical excellence and service to the school and community through music. So the inaugural chapter will have 21 inductees, very exciting. I know that all the students involved are very excited as well. Lastly, I just want to touch on, Neshoba hosted Life Animated, which is an Oscar-winning documentary about a young boy with autism and how he used Disney movies to kind of help him through his life. And the Best Buddies chapter at the high school did a very successful fundraiser last Saturday night. Huge turnout, everyone's excited, so that was a raging success.
Also, great, any questions? Nope. Okay. I've got a couple of updates for everyone. Norms, school committee norms. So I know that everyone is in, excuse me, in the midst of reviewing the handbook, the school committee handbook. And I think Kathy, at the next meeting, will probably be presenting that to us. But we'll have enough time to review before the meeting. In order for us to get our norms completed, because it is part of the handbook, I've asked her to pull those out. And then we'll be looking at those at our next meeting. So that will be on the agenda for the next meeting. We've got to get those done and make sure we're on the same page because the norms are our operating protocols and the way that we handle things within the committee itself. So we're going to pull that out. And then once we approve that, we'll throw that back into the broader handbook, okay? The meeting minutes for our subcommittees, let's just make sure we're back on track with, you know, meeting minutes getting approved, reviewed and approved in a timely manner. We really shouldn't be going past one or two meetings at the most in order to get those posted because most folks in town or who have an interest in the district don't really have time to come to all of our meetings. Though we want to make sure that that information is up there for them. For your reading pleasure, the Mass General Law Book for School Committees and Schools 2017 is available. You probably all have it. I know it's kind of like a tongue-in-cheek thing, but actually it does come in handy with certain items that are specific to school districts and school committees. And I know that as we move towards new business, which we'll be doing in two seconds here, that the superintendent will be sharing with you her selection for community members in Bolton, Stowe and Lancaster on the Facility Advisory Committee. So we're going to be looking for a membership vote. That will be the full committee, including the school committee members. So we, so I take this one. So we had four school committee members that were identified on that advisory. And in looking across it, if we want to keep things consistent from, for each town, because the discussion on the facility committee and whatever the resultant recommendation is to the school committee really is a function of the communities. So in order to make sure that it's fair and equitable, we had one Bolton, one Lancaster, two Stowe. I've talked with Mark, he's okay. He's going to step back out of that. So the school committee members will be Lynn from Stowe, Neil from Bolton and Susan from Lancaster. And then Mark will stay, obviously stay on the budget warrant. And then he is responsible for the audit advisory. That, this group is really just for this part of the leg of the journey, to decide if we move forward or not with feasibility study. And I think that's all I have. So our next item is the facilities update.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to ask Jeff to come to the table and Pat Maroni. Jeff Converse is our Director of Facilities. We've asked him to kind of keep it a little bit short tonight. But if you've got some questions, you know, we'll certainly entertain that. He and Pat work very, very closely and for obvious reasons, you know, because everything that's related to facilities has generally got something to do with money. So the two of them work very, very closely together. And like I say again, I just want to commend Jeff, you and your team's work for the summer. It was just, it was, I just thought a bonus summer for how much we accomplished this year. It really was amazing. So I'm going to have you go through. And then I think we want to make sure that we also talk about looking forward and some of the projects that are, we see coming forward as well as what we've accomplished this summer. So I turn it over to Jeff and Pat.
Okay, great.
So I just wanted to say something. This summer was very different than last summer. To say as far as things being a lot better organized and I'm sure things went a lot smoother for Jeff. Anyway, we can move on with this.
And I think too, Jeff, before you start to go into this, one of the things, I'm glad you brought that up because actually that very discussion happened this morning in our finance subcommittee.
Budget.
Budget Warrant Committee. You know, the question was asked, was it a lot different this summer than it was last year? And there was just no comparison. And I think, you know, we weren't doing the crisis, you know, as we talked earlier today. This summer, we were able to actually go in and do things that needed to be done, but it wasn't on a crisis basis. So with that, then we'll turn it over.
Well, I'm glad you guys didn't feel the crisis. So anyways, thank you so much for your kind words. A lot of the successes for facilities doesn't happen without the support from Superintendent Clancy. So we really, thank you very much. So Pat has put together the slide and we can run through the slide as some topics. As Superintendent Clancy had mentioned, the Lancaster room, Room B 116, that had an odor for years that was studied for different reasons. What we did was we, working with the town of Lancaster, brought in some state representatives who gave us some suggestions on what we should do. We removed some bookcases, removed the heater. We removed a little piece at a time where, until the smell was, had dissipated from the room. And what we found was the heating and cooling unit in the room had a, had a thin insulation backing, which was compromised at one point, whether it be from drying out or water or moisture. And it gave up, the glue back and gave off that odor, which was absorbed into all the wood. And once we took that out, we, you could actually smell it outside. We tried to wash down the heating and cooling unit and the smell is still actually permeates through the metal. So we're in the process of getting a new one installed now. And then we'll put the bookcases back. But I'm confident that that problem has been resolved. We worked on several electric projects across the district. Jim was working hard on installing cameras in Emerson and Florence Sawyer, as well as going around to different areas and installing LED lighting throughout the district. Our parking lots, last year, when I came in, the parking lots hadn't been cleaned. So we really made it a priority to, early on, get the parking lots, the sand cleaned up and get a new line striping on all the parking lots. So you'll see that. We changed vendors this year for the gym and stage floor refinishing. And we found that the results were, we're getting rave reviews from the high school floor. From what I understand, the green that comes out of the high school floor just looks amazing and everybody's very happy with it. We also looked into compli, anything we had that was compliance related. One of them was for our pest control. So through the pest control, you have to have an updated IPM plan. And we were in non-compliance, so we made a point to go through it all. We worked closely with Hudson Pest. And so all of our, throughout the district, our IPM plans are up to date. And they're right at the front desk. So if anybody ever comes in, the front desk has them and easily accessible.
We're not missing the mice. I want to put that out there. I'm not missing the mice. Thank you.
They'll be back. This is the time of season. It starts getting cold, they're looking.
Well, it's been a good year so far.
Everybody, make sure you put your food away. We did purchase the new electric, electrician's van. Thank you very much for that. That big help Jim. His job and his responsibilities have escalated where he works so closely with the fire and life safety and all the alarms and all the cameras and all the electric. And he is on his computer and he's, you know, throughout the district, he's readily available. And the van that he was driving didn't really represent what he was doing. So to have a nice new white van that holds all his equipment, really looks professional, it represents very well. So we do appreciate it. We took the existing electric van and gave it to Food Service, who uses it to shuttle their food and services throughout the district as needed. They didn't have one before. So it was being driven around by Tom and his pickup truck. So we reuse, we're using that. Extended day program space at Hale. So there was a space in the lower level that used to be the Home Economics Room. But it hadn't been used in years and became a dry storage area. Laura Dwyer needed to set up a space there. So we went in, working with Kyle. We were able to redo that room. The custodians painted it. It's a great space. Laura's program is running and everybody's happy. So that was. When you go to the athletic fields, you'll notice the old snack shack has been removed. That was taken care of during the summer. As well as multiple landscaping projects across the district, as Superintendent had mentioned. We went to the high school. We removed a lot of the overgrown brush along the front. And we replaced a lot of the landscaping with more of a sustainable landscaping where we won't have to purchase mulch every year or worry about diseased bushes or plows destroying anything we planted. What we did was we went with a nice landscape gravel with grasses that they grow nice and high in the warmer climates. And then in the winter, they lie dormant and the snow will cover them. And in very easy, all we really have to do is we, the area should come back. And as they grow, they can be separated and multiplied and moved around. The Hale boiler at Hale, we were concerned that there was a crack in it. We actually pursued through insurance. But once we took it apart, we found that it wasn't cracked. It was just a seal that had failed. So we had it all sealed back up and it's fully operational now. So the bigger projects this summer were at the high school, where we, in a very short amount of time, created the new athletic director office, which is right across the hall from her existing office. It has a, so there's a space for the athletic director as well as a small conference room that can be utilized by anybody in the school. And then a space for the new administrator working with Tanya. We also moved the assistant principals from their space at the front. And working with Superintendent Clancy, we found an area that's, was more adequate to hold the three assistant principals as well as the safety officer. The custodians went in there, removed everything during the summer. There was a lot of stuff left in there. They removed everything, painted all the walls up. We had the carpet put in there, furniture was moved in and it's fully operational. Looks great. And we also, so the area, so the department that was displaced by that, we created another space in the media center where we created a large area for them with, and then two adjacent offices. And that space is fully operation, operational as well. As far as looking ahead, there is the boiler program that's, the new boiler system that's going to be installed through the Bolton at Florence Sawyer. And I've been working closely with the town as far as anything we can do to help support that project get completed.
And is scheduled for maintenance?
Oh yes, yeah, we don't have that. The scheduled maintenance for all the district boilers starts September 25th. So they'll be going to school to school to make, to clean them, get them ready to fire up for, before the August 15th date. And then we, Center School has a existing problem where they have a beautiful school, a lot of tile. For some reason, there was a, well, there was lighting put in the floor. It was compromised. They took the lighting out years ago, they filled it, they cracked. And we had multiple contractors, I think I had six or seven contractors come in and provide pricing. Of that, more than half of them refused to do the job because they didn't want to guarantee it. And then a few others gave me advice that this is going to happen again. So we did find the tile. It's a special order tile. We did buy a few boxes of that to have as attic stock in case it does, something happens in that foyer again. But we've also decided not to put tile in that area. And working with the principal of the school, Pat, Superintendent Clancy, we've decided to go with a light, there was, there's a carpet that the school was designed for. We found that as well. And that will, area will be replaced with the carpet so that even if it does crack, we will never, we can just replace it as needed.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd add in there too is we communicate with Bill Wrigley on all of that too. So that he was kind of the help to guide us in that area as well, so.
He was contacted immediately once we realized the direction we were going.
Are you all set?
That's it?
I think we have a question.
I actually have a problem with that. So you're going to put the tile down and let it crack? You're going to just hide it? You're not going to try to?
The tile's down.
It is down, but I mean, so the tile's fine right now?
No.
It's not, it's not fine?
No, the tile, if, as an example would be, if this room was tiled, there is a linear crack that runs about three feet down that wall. And all the tiles, not the grout, we're not talking about grout cracking. We're talking right down the middle of the tile cracking. Underneath that, we pulled up the tile and there's probably a three-inch trench that was formed when they decided they were going to have this in-floor lighting. When they said they didn't want that lighting anymore, they took the lighting out and filled it with just a mastic. So that mastic moved and shrunk. And what happened was over the years, as people walk on it or equipments driven on it, it cracked.
Yeah, you're saying over the years, but that was only, that wasn't that long ago. Did you look into the fact that that was a change order? That was actually a change order? So there should be an architectural drawing or something?
We have all the drawings and it shows nothing.
So the change order didn't come through?
Not that, not from my records. We spoke with over a half dozen professionals and this is what they recommended.
Yeah, I just hate the fact that you're going to put a rug over it and just have it deteriorate and needs.
Well, I don't think deteriorate is a proper, I don't think it's going to deteriorate. I think it's just, you're not going to have to replace tile every few years.
You should go look at it because when I was there for the new student, new teacher orientation, I talked, you, Superintendent Clancy introduced me to the head custodian over there. And he brought it up. You should go look at it. There were like pieces of tile, this is before the school opened, that were like kicked across the hallway, which is obviously a, you know, safety issue. But go take a look at it.
No problem.
And there is a plan for those tiles that are popping? When they put the rug on top, before they do that, they're going to level it so that there isn't, you know, a dip where the tile was.
And the trench is going to go?
What?
So you're going to be filling the trenches, what you're saying?
Right. Well, where the missing tiles will be because they're popping up.
Right. And feel free to reach out to Bill Wrigley because we had a very good discussion with him on the topic.
And I think an important point is that finding a tile company that's going to guarantee that if it happens again, they're going to come back and fix it.
I think Lynn's concern is the root cause. And we should probably.
I think there are a number of theories out there, which is why I would like her to go and meet with Mr. Wrigley because he can, he has his own theory on it. So I would really like you to meet with him and talk to him about it. The other thing too, before we leave, Jeff. The other thing too, before we leave, Jeff, I just want to shout out to Bolton again for your work this summer too, certainly the roadway here where you've, you know, filled in where the trench, speaking of trenches, used to be. And the work that you've done and working so closely with us with regards to the Bolton boiler system that, the new system that we've got coming in here. So special thanks on that too.
Neil, you have a question?
Two questions, brief. First off, so if you look at your own electric bill in Massachusetts, we pay a small portion that goes to MassSave for energy. Audits will come into your home and they do a lot of LED bulb replacement and so forth. Is there anything like that that exists for us on like a school level that you know of that the state might?
Not firsthand, I don't know. I know that whenever we replace fixtures, then we can get rebates. We do.
Okay. Because like 10%, or some crazy small amount of people actually take advantage of this program. So I didn't know if there's like residuals that are available for this district. Just throwing that out there.
There is a program that the municipalities participate in, which as a regional entity, we are sort of closed out of the loop. It happens, I think, all three towns, Lancaster, Bolton, and Stowe are now green communities. And each of the communities received a number of tens of thousands of dollars to improve their energy use. And it happens that the district is not part of any of the towns will not be participating in that. But it could be going forward collaborating with municipalities. That could be a possibility, but it's a future conversation.
That's a good conversation for you to have with your peers in the DPWs. And you had a second one?
Yeah, the other question, it's sort of rhetorical one because I kind of know a little bit about this, but I think that credit is due and needs to be continuously given when due. So pest compliance, may I ask how many possibly years we were not in compliance?
Oh, just recent. Not too many. There was, there was IPMs.
At all of the schools?
Yeah. Yeah, Hudson Pest has been our contractor here for a long time. And when we started looking into it, there was just one small year at a time over the last, maybe a year and a half, that they were trying to cut back on some costs. So that affected the IPM plan.
Wow. Cut back on costs so you got rid of the pest maintenance. Thank you for reinstating that. I'm sure every parent in the district thanks you and every employee in the district thanks you for reinstating that. Thanks, Neil. Okay, so thanks so much for coming. We appreciate that. Good work. And we'll be looking forward to your update on table planning.
Yeah, that'll be, that's up next. Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, so first day update.
Yeah, so that, Pam was going to say, are we doing buses? But no, the first, the first day update is next. So I'll do that and then we can do buses after that then. So first day update, I think Alina's got a little clip that we're going to put on here for you. And then I'm going to kind of go through and talk to you about what our first day really looked like. So Michael Dong and Cindy Larson worked on this particular little bit. We're not going to show the whole thing. It's about eight to 10 minutes long. So we're just going to show you a little bit to give you a flavor of it. So they waved and, oh my gosh, it was just incredible. So very, very cool. Introduced all kinds of the new staff. The principals then come up and they kind of give a broad overview of the new staff members that they've hired in. Ann Marie that also did a folder. We stuffed, if you can imagine, we stuffed 500 folders in our offices this summer. And so everybody who came in got a folder that looked like this this year. And the folder was filled with all kinds of different things. So Ann Marie, for example, went through, there was a whole section here on things that are specific to HR that we thought that people should, would and should want to have. Tom Hool did a piece on food services. There was a section there on absence and substitute management. Both Lorraine and I did back-to-school welcome back letters. I also touched base on life-threatening allergies and the importance of it in our schools and the importance of awareness, good awareness of all staff on that. And we also, I know that the school committee had looked at our district improvement plans, but we also handed out, we took your advice. Remember, we had done some work on this at our retreat this summer. And we took your advice and went through and made some of the additions that you had suggested to both the, this document as well as the pamphlet. And just to explain, we'll probably go into greater detail at some point in time at one of our school committee meetings on this. But it's kind of three-folded, if you will. This, the pamphlet is the quick snapshot down and dirty if you want to see what we're doing in the district in terms of academics and such. This is, this is what you want to see. This document here is more inclined for teachers and administrators and kind of goes through in a little bit more detail of what the expectations are and what we're looking at, the core values that we have, the core expectations for each of the goals, and what that looks like. And so it's laid out, I think, very, very nicely. There's a third layer to this, which is in much greater detail for the staff that are directly involved. So it's kind of, if you think of it like this, the state, for example, when it lays out curriculum expectations, it has standards, which are the basics, and then it lays out the frameworks. And that's where you take the standards and you kind of add a bunch of really, really good stuff to help teachers support in terms of what the work is expected. And then beyond that, at the school district level, you create curriculums. So it's like the three, the three levels. And that's exactly what we used as a template for this. So there's the one that's in a lot of detail, kind of the middle, and then the quick one. So that's in there. Of course, our PD for the course of the year, there's a lot of professional development that's already planned and organized, working around the district improvement plan. So Cindy Larson also went through that so that everybody knew for the course of the year, what we're going to be looking at. So it was really about laying out some really nice, clear expectations for our staff and the goals for the district and where we see ourselves headed. And then the last 20 minutes or so is my chance to have a few, kind of a few remaining thoughts. And so I just want to go through a couple of quick things that I spoke about. The first was snowstorms. Yes, they're going to happen. And I'm always going to make the wrong decision, no matter who you ask for the first call and the second call. Because no one is ever happy with those first two calls. By the time you hit the third storm, everybody's kind of in gear and knows what to expect. But you know, the amount of hate mail versus the amount of email that I get that says, hey, that was a great call. It happens for those first two storms always. So you know, I basically went through again the process that we undergo to make the call to close schools because it's a big decision. It's not, and I explained to, somebody had said, you know, when you and your husband wake up in the morning, there's one look out the east window and one look out the west because so often you make different decisions for your school districts. But the truth is, I mean, he's got different hills on his that I do. I've got three different communities that we correspond with that Jeff is in touch with all morning, sometimes the night before and all morning. And we've got two completely different groups of superintendents that we connect with. So it's a complicated process, but it works really, really well for us. And I know it's not always a decision that everybody agrees with, but at the end of the day, we've made the best decision we can with the knowledge that we have. I did lay out the fact that Nushova Regional High School that we've got, and I'm going to speak to this a little bit more, that we're in the process there of, I'll put forward as-late of names tonight that I hope that you'll accept for the very first committee of several committees that will be forming as we take a look at what to do as we move forward with that. Homework discussion, I also brought this up because we did a lot of really good work within the district last year with regards to discussion on homework across the district. That's going to continue on this year. Last year, we had quite a bit of discussion, particularly in Lancaster and Bolton, not as much in Stowe. And so we're wanting to bring Stowe to that table in a little bit greater depth this year. So I know that Principal Brady has already sent out some information to some of our Stowe folks here to having them to take a look at some things. So we're looking forward to that. That work continuing. And with the hopes, I'd like to point out that at the end of that discussion, we can clearly articulate exactly what our philosophy is, what our thinking is, what our expectations are at the various grade levels, grade groupings throughout the district. Social emotional focus, we'd say, we'd said that last year. And before Donna left, she had laid out a nice agenda of events, possible events. We're hoping that our new nurse leader, when she comes in, will be able to continue on with the good work that Donna had started in that area. We'll continue our work with program reevaluations, which is exactly what we said we were going to do last year. We're going to look again at the pre-K, pre-K, possibly K, and SPED. And that's kind of where those, those probably are going to be the three programs that we take a look at bringing some focus into this year. As a district, we're also going to take a look at the review of suspension policy and practices. And again, that's, that's an area that we did quite a bit of work in last year. And so we're wanting to just kind of tighten that up a little bit this year, again, looking for consistency across the district of what that should and should not look like. Residency parameters continues to be an issue of concern for us. It's amazing what people will do so that they can attend school within the Nushova Regional School District. Honestly, it would, you, well, maybe you wouldn't be surprised. I am surprised by the lengths that some people have gone to do this. We had some tough decisions this summer. We have a lot of cranky parents that are upset that we did not let their children into the district this year. You know, but, you know, for example, but I'm going to have a house in about March or April. No, you can't do that. You need, if you live over here, that's where you need to go to school. So we've had a lot of that kind of thing going on this year. We, I would say probably even a little bit more maybe than last year. And certainly more assertive parents really wanting to demand that their kids went to Nushova this year. So we've actually laid some ground, again, this is an area that we started work on last year. And we've got a committee right now that's meeting to establish clear, although we think the residency parameters are clear. I think that they're looking to even make it more clear. And they're looking at creation, the creation of checklists. Have you done this? Have you done that? Can you show us this? Can you show us that? Which we don't have in play right now. So we've got a committee that's working on that. Rental fees revisit, we did a lot of work in this area as well, back behind the scenes last year. Not quite ready to come forward, but getting narrowly close. That group also has been meeting as well this year as we started the new year. But they did a lot of really good work this, last year. So we're looking forward to just tidying that up. And then athletic fees was the other one that, again, did a lot of work on that last year, but just weren't, was, didn't feel ready. We're ready to come forward with a new slate of suggestions. One of the things that I have said that I'm really advocating for is the notion of looking at families. And again, I know I've said that around this table, I think, before, but having two boys who were incredibly actively involved in every single sport, it adds up so quickly. It just really does. So I'm certainly advocating for some type of a family count. The last one, it must be drying here. You're risky, you're coughing too.
Do you want us to turn the air on? Is that what you're doing? You're threatening to pass out if we don't turn the air on?
No.
Okay.
The last one, we, the last thing that we did is, as, I know as the various retreats this summer, like ours with the school committee, and then we have a retreat with the administrators. And when I asked, you know, if we wanted to do anything different with our administrators this year, they said, no, everything we did last year was perfect. Do it exactly the same. And that's what we did this year. And I know that we talk about lessons learned, you know, as we're going through, you know, retreats like that. Well, we do the same thing as administrative team. And we actually also do that during our admin meetings, particularly the principals meeting. At the end of every principals meeting, because there's always something that comes up that none of us have ever seen before, none of us have ever dealt with before, and we talk about lessons learned. And that's how we almost always end our principal meetings. Okay, what can you talk to with regards to something that's happened in the last week or two that we've never dealt with before? or two that we've never dealt with before? So, what we did at our retreat was we talked about pearls of wisdom, what were pearls of wisdom that we could offer each other. And so, we did that at the end of the principal session, we did it again at the end of the principals' and assistant principal session, and then we did it when we had the entire admin team together and came forward with a number of pearls of wisdom. So, again, I took that same thinking and applied it to our first day back and said, okay, so, some things that we spoke of at our retreat, I think, are applicable here with teachers and staff, as well as it was for administrators. We had spoken, that was just after Charlottesville, and, you know, one of the things that had come up at our retreat was the notion of reflecting and rethinking on the notion of respect and how important it is in our world. And, you know, I'm just going to read one little section here. I said, you know, I think that respect goes hand-in-hand with tolerance and acceptance. And I think, you know, we are a diverse nation, we're a diverse state, we're a diverse school district. And I think that Neshoba must remain committed to acknowledging and celebrating diversity, equity, and inclusion. And in fact, I believe that the strength comes from our diversity, from our uniqueness, and that we're truly all different from each other, and we need to celebrate those differences. So, it was interesting, because I was actually at Hale the next day and was walking on the upper floor. And actually, Kevin, I think it was your room, you weren't in the room, but I don't know who was in the room. And I heard them talking about, what does respect look like? Let's talk about what this, and I thought, yes, that's what we want. So, we talked about respect. We also spoke at some length about communication, the importance of communication and communicating with our parents, the notion of being proactive and less reactive, the importance of saying what we mean and meaning what we say. Also talked about responding to situations, and then I wrapped up with balance and making sure that we have a strong sense of balance in our work lives and life in general. You know, when we kind of have all things in balance and we're really, really productive at work, too. So, that's how we ended it. And then, we showed the video, and everybody left. So, that was how that time period went, and thereafter, we had lunches in the schools and the principals had their site-based meetings. And the next day, the only thing that was a little different is the grades one to five, ELE teachers all met and did some major work on, you know, our initiative for our literacy at that early elementary level. And they felt very good about the work that they accomplished. So, in a nutshell, I know it's like 10-minute nutshell.
That was a nutshell. That's okay.
That's, that was our first day back. So, I'm certainly open to any questions you might have. Neil.
Sorry. So, you hit something that I'm really curious about, and that's the residency issues. You know, just using the loose DSE figures, say $14,000 per student. Are we talking about, like, you're out there trying to protect or identify tens of thousands, a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of additional, you know, the cost for additional students, which result in new hires, because you have, you know, so many kids that bring you a tipping point? I mean, this is something that seems to have really substantial implications, potentially, from this, like, can you, are you able to, at this point in time, talk a little bit more about that and what this is potentially doing to our district?
So, I think you're absolutely right in terms of, you know, is it possible to create tipping points? Definitely, right? Because that's something, someplace. I mean, for example, we got a number of students, I'm going to get the grade wrong, but let me say grade, for the sake of giggles, like grade two, we had like 13 kids come in at that one grade level this summer. Did not see that coming. It wasn't something we could even plan for, although I don't think it was grade two, to be honest with you. But, you know, so you have that come in. The last thing you need is kids to come in to your district from Clinton or Hard City or that who are not our residents and come into that same group. And then, that's exactly what happens, is it creates the potential for a tipping point. And so, then, you're right, then, do we have to add another teacher? Do we have to add more aides, for example? You know, are these, you know, is there other needs that are coming with those kids or not? I mean, so, to put a just a hard number on, I mean, it could be as little as 100, I don't know, 150,000, it might be as much as 500,000, 600,000.
Per year.
Yeah, per year.
No, I get that. That's why.
I think, more than anything, I think it's just really about fairness and being consistent. And that's really what we've tried to do here this year, is try really hard to follow the exact same rules with just a little bit of wiggle room. So, that little bit of wiggle room, for example, is, let's say somebody's coming in and they're kindergarten, and the house is going to be ready October 12th. That's one thing. It's another thing if they're saying, well, we've got somebody coming in kindergarten, but they're not going to be, you know, our house won't be finished until May or June. And no, I don't have any documentation that can show you anything.
Right.
So, you know, those people that can come in and show clear documentation, you can see, you know, and we've got a policy in play as well on that, but we need to tighten it up. It's not just about the policy, it's really about the practice, I think, right now. It's not, the policy, I think, is probably fine, although we might add one line to it.
Because we don't have, I mean, we actively do not have school choice. So, and I know this is probably extremist of me to say this, but it seems like, in some cases, this is fraud. This is people circumventing the whole school choice thing by creating a fictitious address or whatever to get into the district. And so, like, I'm not someone who's cool about that, being a taxpayer, and like.
Well, we want smaller classes.
I guess where I'm going with this is, I hope there's a full investigation that's taking place, and anybody who's doing something like that actively commit, I get there's the timeline about building homes, but the active fraud that might be taking place, I hope we're pursuing that.
Right now, we're just dealing with the folks, and like I say, we've got some cranky parents, I'm just letting you, we've got some cranky people out there right now because we've taken a hard line, and their children aren't coming in here. And to be honest with you, I had, from my lens, I had much more of this at the high school level last year. This year, it's district-wide, it's not just primarily the high school. I would say we had probably every bit as much at the lower elementaries that we did at the high school this year. So, we're just going to continue to work way at it and try to refine our process a little bit better.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item, and what, let's do a quick time check, because I don't have it on mine, it was just added, is a bus update. And I asked to have this item put on the agenda because the opening of school, the first week or so, it trickled into the second week because of the repair to the culverts in Bolton. I didn't hear anything from Stowe and Lancaster, but boy, did I hear enough from Bolton, because the buses weren't running, they were late, 20, 30 minutes, missing stops. So, I had asked Brooke and Pat and Michelle, and thank God, Michelle stepped in to help to give us an update, because it really caused some consternation in the community.
The other thing, I'm glad you brought up the Bolton situation, too, because Dawn's here, and I just want to give a shout-out, again, to Dawn Low over there for helping to support, because we ended up breaking out that one run with the wild, with the Berlin, actually, culvert work that's being done on that. And I think that that was very, very helpful, because, you know, and somebody had said they weren't sure, we actually weren't sure until just about the day before, I think, Dawn, if memory serves me right. And also want to send a special thanks to the chief, too, for staying in contact with us. I mean, I know that he was in contact with you, he's in contact with us. And I know that we were kind of sweating a little bit, I think it was a wilder road one, right up to the day before, and then, of course, the text comes during Dawn's calling me, it's open, we're good. So, we were a little bit nervous on the wilder road, but the Berlin created some other issues. And then, we knew that we could put another bus on there, and so, that's what we did. So, we broke that route into two components. And I know, Pat, you actually went out to that stop that morning.
Yeah, so, the first day.
The first day. So, maybe, and Michelle, I know that you are fastidious with your note-keeping, and if you tell, she will stand out there and say, bus such-and-such, 306, bus such-and-such, 319, and so, I know that you're watching this really closely. So, just give us a quick update from your perspective. Go ahead.
Okay. So, the transition to D has had some unexpected challenges. We knew there'd be challenges due to a new company, new drivers, new, slightly new routes. But, the Berlin road, we did add that 1A bus and a 3A bus at Sawyer. And what that bus had to do was come in through the Harvard area and come in that way and get the kids and route back. So, that seems to have been working okay. We have a couple of lengthy routes, Bus 27 at Luther Burbank trickles into a lengthy Bus 27 at Sawyer. So, we had a meeting with D the middle of last week, and we rerouted a couple of those routes, took some kids off of the lengthy routes and moved them to other routes. The principals were in contact with the parents during the whole thing, let them know. The change started this past Monday, and it took a significant chunk off of those long routes. The drivers are getting used to the routes a little bit more, so we're seeing the times getting better as they're coming in. So, all of the parent calls that I've gotten, I've contacted the bus company right away. I've driven a handful of routes. Anytime that the bus company suggests that the routes stay as-is and the parent calls me, I've double-checked and either told the company to, you know, I think it might be a good idea, or I agree with your choice and we're going to go forward with that. So, I've been in contact with a number of parents now.
How are the calls to your office with issues, are you still getting them?
I'm not getting, I don't think I got any today, actually. So, I think, I think growing pains, I think new drivers, new routes, and, you know, just, you know, now that we've got the two longer route issues taken care of, the calls have died down. I haven't been contacted by D today with any calls that she got that she wanted me to be aware of. So, I think that the situation's getting.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for handling that.
So, one of the culvert's isn't fixed yet?
So, we're going to get to that.
Yeah.
We're going to get, because, you know, when are we going to get to that?
Well, actually, Dawn can even probably speak to that. I don't know, Dawn, if you'd like to speak to that and that.
Well, I'm just wondering, is it going to be fixed in time so that this changes? Because this is going to be adding to the bus budget. Because I don't know if that was put into the budget that you had.
No, and, yeah, I think that, I think we're fine, and that's not, that's not part of, a component that we are worried about right now. We're not dealing with that right now.
With the culvert?
No, with the extra money. That's not coming out of school district, is what I'm saying, too.
Gotcha.
So, okay. Thanks, ladies, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, did you want to speak just ever so briefly about?
Just ever so briefly, exactly.
No, in response to the question.
No, I'll just, I'll give the culvert update. First of all, because it's all about root cause, so I need to say, I say this as publicly as I can, none of the delay is on, was on the contractor. Once we get into the ground, once the contractor got into the ground, Pete was discovered, an unforeseen circumstance, so the Pete had to be dealt with. That's a change order that we'll be handling. Another unplanned-for factor was we had an unusually wet summer at that time of year, so the conditions were much wetter than we'd anticipated. Our engineer designed a temporary dam to deal with the, with the situation. It didn't work. We were having leaking right through the temporary dam, so we had to redesign it and go with steel driven into the ground. That worked. We had an unforeseen beaver dam, but that was a minor, minor thing with the whole situation. So, that was the root cause for the delay. That being said, the contractor, what, probably two weeks ago, gave us an updated schedule of the road would be open by September 22nd. Chief Nelson and I have been working very closely with the contractor, especially Chief Nelson, on a daily basis. And I went over and checked out the culvert yesterday, Chief Nelson and I, I met with the contractor. I heard from the contractor today, and I can now say that sometime Friday afternoon, the road will open. The neighborhood will be able to use it over the weekend, and buses can roll through there Monday morning. So, we're coming in about a week earlier than what it.
Wow, great. Awesome. Thank you.
That's going to change the scheduling and all, are you going to leave it the same?
No, we'll go back up to a more traditional route at that.
Are we going to let the families know? Because, okay.
You can say that now. And once we, once we have the green light from the contractor that everything is clear on Friday, it'll be going up on the police Facebook page, it'll be going up on the town hall Facebook page, but no, no one should expect to be able to travel that road until late in the day on Friday. So, buses should not be planning for Friday, should be for Monday, but we're okay with that.
And we'll wait for your final okay, just like we did with the other.
Right. I'm comfortable with you making plans for Monday.
Perfect.
And just one, one other thing, since you were doing a facilities update, I wanted to note for everybody that we did get the work done on the water treatment facility over the summer. We had a special, a special town meeting article back in December for somewhere over $88,000. The work came in, it's done, and we did it for a little over $69,000, so we've got about $19,000 that we'll be able to turn out to the town from that. But we did get that work done over the summer, too.
Yeah, that was another real success. Thanks, Dawn, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Appreciate that. All right. So, now we're going to move into some meatier topics, and I want to watch the time, but I also want to make sure we have an opportunity to have some conversation. Well, the first one, and hopefully we can get through this quickly, is the Neshoba Regional High School Facility Advisory Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey for a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
And then, we're going to move through that.
So, we want to extend a special thank you to everybody who made application to sit on the committee. I'm, moving forward tonight, I'm offering these names, and I'm hoping that you will approve this tonight. And then, we will send out a letter within the next couple of days, just basically articulating the expectations for the work that this committee is going to do, and timelines, meeting dates, and that kind of thing. In Stowe, I'm putting forth Julianne North and Erica Benedict for Bolton. I'm putting forward Robert Zikansky and Liz Camilleri for Lancaster, Heather LeBlanc and Jay Moody. And of course, each, as Chairman Ramosco said earlier, each of these communities is also represented by a school committee member as well. So, I think that'll make a really nice group. I appreciate everyone that's had anything to do with this. I also want to know, she, she had alluded to this earlier, Chair Ramosco, but there'll be other opportunities for those folks who have wanted to be part of this and couldn't. This particular committee is really a committee that's just basically in place, it's an ad hoc committee for right now. As soon as they make the decision, then you're going to have to decide from there, next steps or not. And if there are going to be next steps, then, it's not that this committee sees it through to the end. This committee has a very specific purpose. It's the goal or no-go, and what that looks like, and a recommendation to the school committee. The other thing, too, I want to make sure that we're clear on, is that whatever the recommendation is, doesn't necessarily mean that the school committee has to abide by that. The school committee thereafter makes the decision based on what they, they've also heard from within the community, their sense of the polls, and tie that in with the recommendation of this particular group. So, that is the slate of committee members I'm moving that you accept this evening.
So, what we need is someone to move that the Neshoba Regional High School Advisory Committee is comprised of, from the school committee, Neil Darcy from Bolton, Lynn Colletti from Stowe, Susan Reeder from Lancaster, residents Julianne North, Erica Benedict from Stowe, residents Robert Zikansky, Liz Camilleri from Bolton, residents Heather LeBlanc, Jay Moody from Lancaster. And our administrative representative is Superintendent Clenchey. And I need somebody to move that in order to establish.
Will you do that? I just, can we just have very clearly stated exactly what, you said a go-no-go, but it's a go-no-go to apply to the SBA?
It is, it is, so.
Go ahead with the SBA.
So, it is a recommendation, once the information is determined, whatever the, you know, they've got to look at the data, they've got to make, create a point of view, and it's not just a focused point of view on, we're going to do this, it's, this is the situation. Take that to the three communities, share that information with the three communities so that the communities can ask their questions, listen to what the communities are saying, come back to the school committee and make a recommendation to apply for a statement of interest, which will allow us to secure a feasibility study if we're accepted into the MSBA for that particular thing. It is not a commitment for any building, it is not a commitment for, it is, and as we said last year, a feasibility study allows us, as a community and as a school committee and as a district, to understand what our options are for that building. It is not a commitment to build, to replace, to augment, or that's not what we're doing. We're taking this step by step, and we want to make sure the community is aware, because the decision, again, is a community-wide decision. So, that's a great suggestion, or question. Thank you.
So, building off the Steve, that's how we're going.
So, building off the state, are we going to have something written somewhere where we have a stated charge?
Your charge is in?
Just, I'm just saying so that there's transparency as the, as the process goes through.
The charges, the charge is here and that's what we're going to use.
Sure.
Does that work?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, just so that there's, if you're talking about multiple, so that there's this state, so that the process is identified and can be followed along the way, just for.
Yeah, so for this particular effort, that, I don't think the.
The charge is there.
Yeah, the charge is there. And it will be in Superintendent Clenchey's documentation that she shares with the group. And you know what, that's a really good question because, because we know the charge doesn't necessarily mean that the group knows the charge. And I will be at the first meeting in case anybody has questions. And maybe that's a good question to bring up at the meeting if, if, if it's unclear. Okay? So, that was good. Any other questions? You guys good? Somebody want to move that? I need somebody to move it. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Neil. All those in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. All right, good luck, thank you.
I'm sending, I'm sending a slate of meetings out and such, and the charge, all of that's going to go out.
Okay? All right, thank you all for that. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Agenda Items by Month. So, this kind of fell out of our workshop in June and we could flip them. Now, let's do the Agenda Items by Month. So, one of the things that we talked about, remember all the sticky notes that were everywhere? I took all of the data that came out of that meeting, all of the notes, and kind of synthesized things down into the overarching goals for the school committee, which we'll talk about in a minute. But, one of the things that I noticed where there were, you know, Dorothy Presser, MASC rep, said that we, we did a great job self-regulating because we got to a point where it was like, ooh, that's really not ours, is it? But, of those things that we identified as important, that we wanted to hear more on, but that we recognized were in the administrations camp, I did put together a calendar for us to be able to get a report out on those items. So, that's in the deck, or in the deck, it's not a deck, sorry, that's my work world. That's in the packet. These, this is not an exhaustive list. It is things that we've talked about that needed to be followed up on, things that we had open communication with the administration on. There may be more that are added, but I think the point is to try to be able to give us an opportunity to look out and see what are the things that are coming, but to inform the community about when we're going to be having sensitive or hot topic discussions that they're interested in. So, I don't want to boil the ocean with diving down too deep on topics, but I do want you folks to take a look at this. Some of this was frankly taking things that we already do during the school year and just kind of thinking through, and I worked with Superintendent Clenchey on this and then brought Kathy, Cody and the vice chair into it as well. Are we thinking about this the right way with timing? So, I put this out there for your review and on any comments, questions, thoughts you have on it. You don't have to vote on it. It's, it's an FYI and is there anything glaring? Is there anything that you know in your subcommittees you're probably going to be responsible for participating in that's problematic? And if everybody, if nobody has any concerns, questions or comments on it and you need time to review it, then please do and then send those emails to me and then we can have that discussion. Lynn?
Is the school choice hearing invoked, is that late?
No, it's not. It has to be done by June, is it June 1? Yeah, so we typically have done it in April, yeah?
That's passed on a lot, it's June 1. So, how would, okay, I just didn't really like, because of all the other, lotteries and stuff happen in March.
So, you know, that is, I mean, that is a question, could we do it, we could do it, we could do it in March.
We could do it whenever.
Yeah, we could do it whenever is right. And I like what you're saying because there are parents that wait.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to do it earlier, actually.
Yeah.
And I just want to miss a deadline.
Well, we won't miss the deadline, but it's more about community.
Yeah.
And self-inflicted drama.
Yeah, exactly.
We do, we want to do the right thing, make sure that.
Because that comes with the kindergarten, yeah.
So.
And make sure that everybody's plenty of.
You know what, that's a good point. Now, the question is, given the fact that we're so buried in budget, I, I actually, it won't take that long, we could put it in February, does that make sense?
Do you want to do it earlier?
Just do it in January.
We could do it now.
Yeah, we could.
Do you want to put it on the agenda for the next? All right, you know what, I'm going to move it up.
Do you have to do it in that year?
No, it's school year.
It's probably coming year.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move it up.
And, I know you don't want to dig in the weeds, but on the same, same line, like the kindergarten, we promised that we would do that sooner. Would that be in here somewhere?
So, that's a good point. So, I will talk to Superintendent Clenchey and we said we would get that done, Neil, when did?
Beginning, we, we said we'd do that first thing.
Beginning of January?
This year. No, no, no.
Oh, right now. I think we were all there. But you didn't be able to bring something forward, that's what we were looking for. That's what we were going for, anyway. And the staff has been working on that, actually, this summer.
All right, so how about if I move the school choice hearing and vote to October? And we'll add, are you going to be prepared for the? Oh, my gosh, why did I just lose it?
In November, do you want to put?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put that into November.
And that's K?
Yeah.
Well, K and pre-K. Okay.
So, the only question I have is like, this is great. Do we have like Lynn's famous initiatives catalog that she has from the past umpteen years that you've been here? Where things have fallen by the wayside? So, are we creating along with this a way of actually tracking these initiatives and where the end results are so at the end of the year we can say, okay, we accomplished A, B, C of these initiatives? Maybe some things get pushed off, maybe you get, but we don't want them to get pushed off beyond the calendar and drop off.
That's why this was done, so that we don't forget the things that we said we were going to do and commit to. If someone wants to keep track of it, I think our meeting minutes are the record as to whether or not we.
But, at year-end, when we do like the evaluation or whatever, our self-evaluation, then we're going to circle back and cover this now?
Yes, yes.
That's all I'm saying, like where we come back to.
Yes, yeah, because that, now we know what we're committing to.
Right.
Although, we're not voting. But, that's why it's important if there's something on here that doesn't look right or if there's something that's not on here that's critical, like again, I don't want to create busy work and now it's warm. Yeah, Lisa, yeah, it's warm. Let me know. So, just take the time, but I think those two suggestions are great, we'll move those.
And I'm wondering, because you're picking up. No?
No.
Go ahead.
And a lot of things that were added, you know, when we added personnel and we said, we want to report to say how, like, excuse the custodians, you know, we said, okay, so, if we're going to get an update to say, okay, this worked. And this is how it worked, and this is where it saved money or whatever. So, we had a bunch of those. So, would those fall into here also?
So, when, these are big things, again, the custodian thing has, we've talked about that and that is something that's going to be coming up. It's not, that's a facilities, part of the facilities, so it's not on this. These are bigger initiative-type items, but that will be on a school committee agenda and you guys have to let me know when you're ready. Superintendent Clenchey will let us know when she's ready because she's got it on her tracking. But, yeah, we have, I mean, I'm not going to keep track of every single thing that every person said. You guys need to be part of that, too, right? So, yeah, so, the, the, we've talked about the custodians because we added them. What, if there were anything else?
Uh, we added the assistant for Tom Hohl and the AD. We added.
Well, that, that's just starting, so, not Tom Hohl, but, didn't we just add him?
No, they've been, well, they've been in play for a couple of months.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't forget, we didn't, they haven't even been a whole year, they've just been a couple of months.
And then it was even the program they're using, so, is the program.
The mosaic, the mosaic.
The mosaic, I think the mosaic makes sense, right? Because we've had a full year to see how it's performed.
Couple of months.
I thought it was in last year.
Yeah, we did, but it was like December, January, like, when it got fully implemented, it was like December, January.
All right, why don't we do this? Why don't genuinely, seriously, send me the things that you are interested in and we will go back.
We can go on a minute list.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, when we do, like, when Tom does his normal report out, couldn't we like just make sure that those are some of the items that he's reporting out?
They would be.
Right, but that.
But, when are we scheduling him?
And we're keeping it clean.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that we don't have to wait until February to hear, or in the midst of budget season, to hear, you know, all of these report outs because then it's so much, it's like information overload.
We need to run before because, again, we're going to be paid for it again. If it doesn't work, it doesn't make sense.
So, some of those are on here.
Working amazing. But, it's the end, and the end of the year.
So, we need to, okay, so, so you're directs. And just keep in mind, we've got October, half of November, one meeting in November, one, maybe two meetings in December.
So, can I bring some, so something we talked about today at B&amp;W meeting, it's a hard one to remember.
He has a blank.
Was the idea of, right, I mean, we only loosely talked about this, the idea of the going, the three years and the, and the deeper dive, is that something we should be having putting on this calendar or talking? Do you know what I mean?
With the, this is the notion of the audit.
Doing like, like a pseudo forensic audit, a forensic style audit every few years, just a little bit deeper dive than what we do for a normal annual audit.
So, so, you know, yeah, and I don't want to get into the, yes, and Brooke and Superintendent Clenchey and I talked about, I want to bring forward to you guys, putting a line item in the budget for a third of the cost of the forensic audit because generally superintendent's contracts are what, every three years, every five years?
Yeah.
And what we heard was that the recommendation is when you have a switch over, either you get a new superintendent or it's just a good time to level set that. So, if we put something in the budget a little bit at a time, it's not going to be a big hit for us. Is that what you're?
Yeah, whatever that conversation's going to be, I'm just asking if that should be on the initiatives calendar because it sounds like maybe maybe not.
How do you trigger it?
Yeah, how do you trigger, trigger the, because a lot of people want to be here.
Creating a policy would be a way to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's right.
Susan.
A policy.
Can we get through the meeting? Can we get through the meeting what?
Manual.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a note, Susan, it's a.
A policy to add a third, like, well, portion, a line item in the budget.
It's, no, the policy is to identify that we're going to be on a regular schedule as a district.
For forensic.
Evergreen for a forensic audit. And the way, I mean, I don't know that this has to be put in the policy, but just to make it a little less problematic financially, to put a little bit of money aside every year to fund that.
You could also build that possibly into the forensic, into the audit. Help me out, Mark. Yeah. You know what I mean?
I would do it separately.
Yeah, but it becomes a charge that, that audit advisory would be fulfilling. So, they're fulfilling the annual and the auditor, right? So, they're making sure that that's aligned, perhaps.
So, it could be a charge?
I think we're down a rat hole and I'm not sure.
I think it's a future discussion.
Yeah.
So, again, should we put it on this or is it, that was my whole question.
I think the policy, I think what we've said here is that we'd like to see a policy.
Sure.
Right? And then we can have policy, take that and work on it. And then when it comes forward, if the discussion, if the, is the question, how is it going to answer?
It was just on the initiatives calendar, like whether we should put that particular topic on the initiatives calendar along with what we have on there.
I think that would be just a regular, we could, but again.
It's a budget item.
It's just a, it's just a regular line, it's a regular agenda item on a school committee meeting, right?
Totally. I mean, we're talking about the function of it, too, so we're going to have that conversation and some other things, but yeah, yes.
So, why don't we let policy do their thing and that will trigger the discussion?
With assistance from B&amp;W.
We don't desist.
I mean, I would be.
It, that's fine.
I feel loose and I'll watch back the, the meeting so I know exactly what you want for policies.
Well, I, I think the deliverable is that policy creates a policy. Certainly, you guys want to work together, that's fine, just make sure you post the meeting.
Put up a policy.
To identify that we will be in an evergreen.
Three-year cycle.
Was it three years?
Thank you for.
Three-year cycle?
Yeah. For the forensic audit.
Yep. Three or five?
Three, right? Three. I would do three, but I mean, it's really, it should be in tandem with the superintendent's contract, I would think.
I think right now, though, particularly with what we went through last year.
Three years.
Three years, it's not a bad idea. And then I think we can take a look and say, yeah, we have gotten some of these things right or no, we didn't, or are we still going to go back and revisit or whatever? I would support three years, to be honest with you, right now.
I apologize for all this. That was not the intent of my question.
It's okay, but, no, it's, it's fine, it's good conversation. And that, and actually.
It would get lost.
What are you doing?
What is it? Well, he was apologizing and I said, no, if you didn't bring it up and we didn't finalize it, it would get lost. Because we talked about it and we'll forget about it.
Also, just to make a point, we did schedule a second meeting in November.
Okay, well, that's great, thanks for that. Okay, anything else on this? Wow, send me your comments. So, I need to add this. Hold on, guys. All right. That actually was good. All right. So, again?
He sounds surprised.
No, I, it's like, yeah, we got something done, great. The next item is the overarching goals. Okay, going back again to the meeting in June, the workshop in June. These are the draft overarching goals for FY '18 based on the comments that you all had and the things that you wanted to put forward. So, we can have discussion and we should have discussion on this. Did everybody get a chance to read it? Okay, so, we might as well go through. Overarching goal one is that the Neshova Regional School Committee will establish regular ongoing recording mechanisms to monitor district goals, budget and operations and support of student achievement. Not something that the Budget and Warrant Committee is working on with the administration, right?
Uh huh.
Overarching two, goal two is develop school committee norms and accepted practices that ensure no interruption in school committee processes and oversight as individuals join and lead the committee. And the key at the, is the end of that statement, which is joining and leading the committee when we have shifts and changes, as members rotate in and rotate out. We've lost a lot of intellectual capital here and it's created some not-good situations. So, how do we protect the district and how do we protect the work that's being done? That's why the handbook, that's why we need you guys to review it. But, again, pulling those norms out that help direct some of that work. Overarching goal three is that the school committee will continue to review and revise policies for up-to-date alignment with Mass General Law, Department of Education goals and standards to reflect the Neshova community. So, it's the work that Susan and the, and the policy team is doing, but it's not just taking the MASC boilerplates, it's interpreting that for the district and the culture of the district. Okay? And overarching goal five is the Neshova Regional School Committee will continue to engage the school and resident communities and its vision for student achievement. Our efforts are grounded in the belief that first-rate public education is our community's most valuable asset. I think the engaging the community piece is part of, and I, and I realize that, that there's more we can put on this, but we want to be realistic. That part of this is so we can give people an idea of when those hot topics are coming before they come. That's why the community involvement, which is critical for the facility advisory, there will be more opportunities to pull the community in as well as we go through the year. And I think we've all recognized that we need to be a little bit more outward-focused in some of our work and not allow the work that we're doing to be interpreted. But, we need to be in front of it and in front of people and get that information out there rather than that, there's some really terrific work that's been done and the way it's been positioned is not appropriate, it's not fair and it's not accurate. And that's on us, right? That's up to us to let people know, this is what's happening. Okay?
But, did you miss number four?
Did I do four? Okay, let's go do four. So, four is, we'll continue to drive more visibility into the district's.
Yeah, we had a great discussion today, I think, that just put us light years ahead.
Yeah.
Like much further than I thought we'd be a month from now.
I mean, I think after going through last year and I know that it was painful for everyone because it was so, it was such a big, big animal to try to parse, I have certainly a lot more understanding of what's going on in that budget we should have and now that we have, you know, the willingness to give us that information, I think it's, it's really not just, do you see what the information is, what does it mean, what's the implication of it, right?
Yeah, shout out to Kathy Tier because...
Shout out to Kathy Tier, right. She's still logging her own.
That stuff, right, yep.
Well, does it still look the same?
No. We need to evolve it, so, but the conversation is absolutely where it needed to be.
Yep. All right, folks, thoughts on the overarching goals draft based on what was said at our workshop?
I have another question. I know because we do it and we're there and we know how we got here, has anybody read this like outside of that to see if this makes sense to anybody else?
So these, so like level set, these are our goals.
Yep.
As to what we see the needs are in order for us to operate efficiently in supporting the district and providing oversight and governance.
Okay. So it doesn't matter or it's fine?
No, what do you mean? Does it make sense?
Well, I'm reading it and I'm saying, wow, this is really good and you just compacted it into one sentence and I'm like, wow, an outsider understands what we were talking about.
Because we've lived this. No, 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 what do you guys think?
The way you just described it, I knew that it matters, but...
Well, it all matters, we want to make sure people, no, Lynn, it matters, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but then again, I can't, you have to...
I think the goal at the year end, when we circle back, we always review the goals and what's actually been achieved.
Right.
That's, that's the time when everybody can kind of connect the dots, okay? Because, you know, you've got this one sentence and you've got to, you've got to boil it down to one sentence. It's your charge, your mission statement for that particular thing. And now here's what we've done to achieve that goal and then those become tangibles that anyone can actually look, right? It's our empirical evidence or proof of what we have or haven't done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Susan, Elise.
None of these are good.
Claire.
I'm fine with them. I'd love to change a phrase, drive more visibility to something else, but aside from phrasing ...
That's all right, no, what do you, you know what, we might as well...
I don't have a proposal additionally.
Oh, but, so what does it feel right about it?
I don't know what it means.
All right, then you know what? If you, if, if we don't have any strong issues with this, we can either vote on it if you need time to think about it, we could do it the next meeting, but I think given that there aren't a lot of, there's not a lot of discussion, I wouldn't want to go beyond the one meeting.
Actually, he's asked a question about this that I'm reading.
Ah!
I'm like, no, you know what, actually, because are we talking about visibility in terms of people being able to see what we're doing or transparency in terms of people being, you know, visibility and transparency are slightly different and we mean more just that people will...
Be more aware.
Be more aware.
It's awareness, that's a better word.
Or is it that we're trying to be more transparent in the way that we make budget decisions and go through this budget process?
I think transparency in this, okay, I'm going to go out on a limb here, so here it comes and, you know, and I can hear where this is coming from, but I think transparency is a throwaway word to me. I think that accessibility is a much more appropriate word.
Accessibility to the process.
And awareness. Accessibility to the information and awareness of it. I mean, the bottom line is what, so step outside of the words and what is the, and I, if I think back on what were all the comments and the stickies that I had that created this, it was, we want people to be able in our communities to know where we're spending the money and why we're spending the money. Frankly, I think the budget book does that. If, if people have more questions and we're going through initiatives, like when you get up and do your capital planning and you come to us with that information, you know, we need to be able to make sure that the discussion that happens here is something that everyone understands and I think that will happen because we're going to be asking the questions. But it's really bringing forward those people, bringing forward...
The budget calendar and the silos and so forth and what that we talked about.
Right, I mean, the directs, all of Brooke's directs, when she brings her directs forward, those people are going to be talking about what's happening in food service, what's happening in athletics, that's driving more visibility, awareness and access to the information. So that really was trying to kind of, it was hard writing things, but put it in all together. So I, that's a long-winded answer, but...
No, I think that works for me.
So what are we doing with it?
Change it to awareness.
Awareness.
Or visibility, I think that's either one's fine.
What's a word? But, so awareness now sounds more like a promotional thing, now we need to promote this, we need to get it out.
I like...
So we're going to start hacking on words.
That's what's, what's, because we have an object that is actually promotable.
Right, we've got it, but is our charge in this to make the public more aware of the book or to make the process more throwaway word transparent?
I think both.
Okay, we're splitting hairs.
Right, so we're splitting hairs and all I'm saying is that, right, but, right, so all three words mean something slightly different.
What do you want, what do you want this goal to be? Step away from the words, what do you want this goal, what do you want to do with this goal? It's about budget operations, it's about making sure the community has access to the information and they can understand what's there. To me, again, that's the budget book and bringing forward people who represent significant areas of expense in the district and having them do report outs, right?
Can you add the word accessibility then?
Yep.
Visibility and accessibility instead of transparency or...
That's the fourth word.
I would have said that too.
Awareness.
Because there's, just posting it online and saying, well, now it's visible, but that doesn't necessarily get us to, do people understand, are they getting the access and do they, you know, know how to get the information?
So maybe it's, it's, it's driving an understanding of the district's budget operations and extending its accessibility. How's that?
I like that one.
So do you want me to read this back to you and then?
Please.
Okay, good Lord, and here we go. Okay, "The Nishoba Regional School Committee will continue to drive understanding through its district budget operations and extend its accessibility in its..." Now you're killing me here. This is hard and I do this for a living, I write for a living, this is hard to do it on camera. And needle!
Why didn't you just let it rest until the next meeting and...
I'll bring you something.
...tends to think about it.
But it's accessibility, it's understanding and accessibility, so I got that.
Isn't it more of a process?
What? Say that again, I can hear you.
Isn't it more of the process?
No, we're not talking process because you talk, why, why, what...
Because, I mean, you're saying budget operations, what exactly do you mean by that?
How does the finance arm...
Budget formulation.
Right.
You're saying formulation and that's almost...
Okay, so you guys are going to send me your comments and I will come up with a revised four number overarching for, Alida, can you make sure I do that? Not that I won't do that, but put that on the agenda for me because I know with all the follow-ups we have to do.
Next meeting?
Yes, for the next meeting. And guys, if you have comments, send them. And then we'll, we'll do that for the next meeting.
Don't reply all.
Don't reply all. Okay. So I've got some follow-ups. I'm good. Are you good? That was good discussion though. Insight and understanding, that was a good one. I think that was a good one. I have someone I can give credit to for that, but I'm not going to tell you who it was. Put that one down too. All right, we're moving on. And we are moving to old business, we don't have any. We are actually on schedule and we've only got one subcommittee report out because we've just started and I know the subcommittees are just meeting. Susan, do you have a report out?
We met with Dorothy to go over sections E and F and then we'll meet in two weeks to go with the changes. I do have those tables with, with a summary of the changes for sections A and B for everyone. I just, I don't know what a good time is like in advance of a meeting to get those to, because I sent out all the red line sections, so I have them. Do you, do you want them now or do you want to wait till they show up on an agenda?
No, well, first of all, look, so I think it would be helpful if we had almost like a calendar from you guys as to when you will be ready for us to review things and I would say we need, if it's, if it's a significant amount of reading, give us two weeks to get through it.
Yeah, okay.
Because we've got...
If we could get on an agenda as soon as possible for sections A and B, that would be great.
So, so sections A and B and can you make those...
Or at least one of the two.
How much, how much is that? How much is...
A is shorter than B. B, B, there's, there weren't many changes, but there's more policies. A, there are more changes, so maybe, maybe A. A, just one meeting.
You want, okay, so...
And then we'll get a sense for how long that takes and then...
Yeah, we just do one section at a time.
Okay, and then can you get those out to us like tomorrow?
Yeah.
Then you guys, we've got two weeks to review, that's, that's doable, right?
And you already have both sections, the original, with our original policy, policies from section A, the mask ones that Dorothy brought to the table and then the red line changes from after the discussion. Do you have those, I can resend them?
I, you know what, could you, because I think people are gonna...
I would do a resend.
Yeah, just send us what you want us to do.
Okay.
That would be great. Okay. Any, does any, I know it's not on there, but Neil, do you want, we haven't had personnel yet.
We did three things today generally. The, one, one we covered, which was talk about that potential three-year, we just touched on that. We talked about norms, expectations and sort of process, how things are going to work this year. We're kind of pivoting away, you know, we're not charging the ivory tower as, as I was saying, I mean, that, that's done. We're no longer in the trenches of the administration, we're now working in partnership with the administration in the capacity of oversight. And so forensic audit's a gun, all that digging. And so it's, it's, it's a bit of a paradigm shift for us that needs to take place this year and so we talked a little bit about how we're going to go about doing that. And then the last thing was the, we don't really have a name for it other than the budget calendar, which also deals with some of the silo things. And we had a little bit of, I think, a good, rich conversation that everybody participated in and had something of solid value to add to it and I think the end result was sort of, I think, a more comfortable understanding between school committee and administration for sure and I felt great, like we're going to get something accomplished and there's a little bit of level of trust that we're not going to be crossing lines and getting into their business and that's it.
Well, I think the trust thing is big and you guys have worked on it, I mean, I think the whole committee has worked with the administration and with the committee itself, so, so that's good to know, that's great. Thank you for the update. Correspondence, anything of note? And does anybody have any issues with the meeting minutes of June 28th and the warrants of September 15th? If not, we'll assume that those are good to go. Our items for next agenda, so let's just recap what we just did. We're going to bring forward the updated agenda items by month, you guys are going to send those to me, some additional components. I really would be okay with building as many agendas as we can, as long as we're not overloading them, that at least ensures that we're not going to have two and three-hour meetings all the time, but we just need to be able to leave some wiggle room for issues that come up that we need to address. So I'll update that, send your comments. Section A, policy review, Susan's going to send that out from the policy group. I will update the overarching goals and we can have another hopefully brief discussion on it. I think at that point, we probably will have an update from Superintendent Clutchy on the facility, it's okay, the high school facility, the new advisory. Anything else? Nope, okay. Then in, I think, copy. So we are going to move into executive session and that executive session is, we are not going to reconvene into open session, so I need someone to take care of business and Mark, I think you're the guy.
Right. I move that we go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with regard to an open reading law complaint as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on our partnering in litigating position and chair does so declare and we're doing this with Mass General Law, chapter 38, section 21A3 and the committee will not reconvene in open session and adjourn after the executive session.
Perfect. Okay. And we also need to add on to that, Alida, that it will include Superintendent Clutchy,